Company is the school committee to order at six o'clock. First order of business is through the minutes of January 16th. Fourteen minutes, January 16th, forty-five. Personal conversation, all favor. National statement and warrants. Okay, fourteen warrants were signed since the last meeting and reviewed electronically, so only one hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Two things that I wanted to point out, one, on the school choice report, you'll see that there is an amount in there for ninety thousand dollars for out of district tuition. We don't have a student going out this year. I think they actually reached out last year and we just left it in because that's where we paid it from. So that'll save us ninety thousand in school choice expenses, which is positive because it'll help us like new funds play down between continuing that conversation moving forward. And then on the general fund, you'll notice that the maintenance account line is currently over in that report. It's towards the back of the report, function code, order, twenty, something somewhere around there. This building is starting to show its age in regards to the HVAC system. It's functioning, but there's been a lot of repairs needed. And when I say a lot, we spent probably fifteen thousand dollars already this year on various adjustments to air handwork units. We had a freeze recently with something like a really cold weather that cost us like a few thousand dollars. So nothing catastrophic, but you know, it's a thirty-year-old building and while the boilers are in great shape, some of the parts that go along with that can bring starting to show. I think that's important to talk about because if our budget is forty thousand and you've already spent fifteen and have a few more months to get through and you know, once we start running those AC units, even though they're all brand new, they're going to have some kinks to work out or a lot of them are brand new. It's a good chunk of our building general repairs budget going to, but might be something that we want to talk about in future project years or if we have. Not a major concern, but. All I have unless you have specific.
What in particular are the issues that we're having with the boiler? Is there a specific like?
It's not the boiler because the boiler is relatively new. I'm going to pull up the maintenance sheet and I can look at the notes on it. It has to do more with well, this is the unit is up there, right? But in a lot of the office there's or classrooms, there's like these large, they're called air handwork units like we have in our offices that helps regulate the heat and circulation in the room. So that's really then. We have a pretty detailed.
I think like kind of the root of the question, I just wonder is there a need to to kind of look, project out for make a major expense or are we looking at nickel and diming our way through this issue in the years ahead or and what's the, what type of issue are we running into here?
Yeah, and I again, it's not the boiler because the boiler is relatively.
Right, so I think that you're looking at the list that's from this year, it's a lot of small things, dampers that are sticking in that replacement.
I'm like, but that is on the cap list.
So you know, the circulation water connects still, you know, push the water through the boilers needs to be replaced. That's thirty years old, you know, so that's on the cap list, but it's those kind of things. So you know, you put it together for a bigger project or you just can, I mean, we can ask Bill, we can talk. Steve, that's what's the best way to go.
A lot of the notes are repair a fan in an air handler unit, replace a broken belt in an air handler unit. Which those are just you know, small individual things, but they add up to quite a bit. One, because we're paying prevailing wage. You know, but a small, small job, you know, fifteen, twelve, fifteen hundred dollars and ten service. A heater leak in a bathroom. So it's nothing catastrophic, but we certainly can talk with Bill about it. We have a facility set in next week, right? So we'll throw that on the list.
And understand what
Absolutely.
we're looking at.
Next up, the principal's report, which is emailed out.
Yeah, I'm covering for Tina, I'm going to read her report, if you can give us a read through it. I think. She talks about this all school meetings and the field trips and the you know, the instructional leader team update. So, you know, you can read through it and ask your question.
All right, next up, public comment. Do you still want to give a public comment? Lisa, you're up, security.
Yeah, I'm coming on. It's slow. I don't know if you can, yeah, okay. Thanks. So I'm Lisa Gaylor. I'm a special education teacher at Deerfield and also co-president of the Union Thirty-Eight Educators Association. And I have a statement that I've prepared to read. These are based on January statements that were released by the NEA, the MTA, and Darius Modesto for Frontier and Union Thirty-Eight. National Education Association President Becky Pringle released the following statement on reported executive actions that hurt students, public schools, and communities. Most Americans believe that every student deserves opportunity, resources, and support to reach their full potential, no matter where they live, the color of their skin, or how much their family earns. Parents and educators agree our students need more learning opportunities, not less. They need smaller class sizes to get more individualized attention. They need nutritious school meals so they can pay attention to class rather than their stomachs, and they need access to mental health supports. They need to be respected for who they are, no matter their race, place, background, sexual orientation, or gender identity. And our students need to learn the good and bad of our history to be prepared to succeed in our diverse and interdependent world. MTA President Max Page and Vice President Deb McCarthy released this statement. We condemn in the strongest possible terms the directive that would allow ICE agents to raid and arrest students in our public schools. It is repulsive to our shared common values, and this cruel policy shatters the trust that families place in our educators and our public schools as safe havens and inflicts lasting trauma on innocent children. As educators, we stand in solidarity with immigrant advocates, community allies, and all who fight for justice and humanity. We will fight against this policy with every tool at our disposal and remain committed to ensuring our public schools are spaces of learning, belonging, and safety for all students. Then Darius, our superintendent, released two statements regarding immigration concerns and revisions to Title Nine or challenges to LGBTQ plus rights. And I want to say that Darius did that in advance of even Desi sending out their statement. Just this past week, Desi sent out a statement. Union Thirty-Eight Educators Association fully supports all of these statements that have been made and appreciates that our superintendent sent these out to ensure that our students are supported and protected. We know that not all superintendents have come out with statements supporting these marginalized communities. We feel fortunate to be in a district and community that values all of its members. Thank you.
And heard anyone else who wants to read a statement, but does anyone else out there? Now it's your time. Thank you. All right, next up, we are going to take a look at the budget. The budget? Yeah, we'll, we'll email it out. I'll send it to the town administrator tomorrow morning and then you guys should, I didn't print any paper copies. You should have frontiers by now. I sent that off. Usually I swear this well. Okay, let me share my statement. Yeah.
Thank you.
That big enough? Okay. All right, so as a reminder, one percent general fund budget increase over the prior year is just over fifty-three thousand. The level service budget that we're going to talk about today includes wage placeholder for teachers and IAs that are in negotiations currently, school-based staff and the central office staff. It also includes some adjustments based on actuals to the below accounts that we're going to look at. And this is new since the last meeting. So we had a student tuitioning in into the DEN program from another district. That student has left mid-year, so the tuition for the current year has finally due, and we did not anticipate tuition from the program next year. We were paying an IA on that this year, knowing that we had some tuition coming in, so we moved that out. Had to change the method. And so that was an adjustment of thirty-three thousand. So the expense accounts that have been adjusted are relatively minor. The copier contract, we have new printers and copiers in the building that is showing an increase of just shy of twenty-five hundred. Transportation, which is based on our contract, has a quota of two and a half percent. Building and liability insurance, which we pay to the town because they pay a full bill and then bill us for this portion. Our water consumption has been up over the last several budget cycles, so we're making an adjustment there and then also an adjustment for central. Taking those pieces into consideration and the wage growth, the level service budget came in at four point four one over FY twenty-five, which is roughly two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. When we last met in January, rural aid had not yet been applied to the budget. Darius and I are making the recommendation to bring down the four point four one percent of applying half of the district's allocation of rural aid. This year, we received about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We're recommending putting fifty-five thousand, which is just over one percent, to reduce the budget increase over FY twenty-five to three point three eight or a hundred and two. The other half of rural aid, we are going to recommend. New requests are minimal. We did talk about this last month. We are asking for an eleven thousand adjustment, which is an additional point two one percent to increase the line for musical instrument replacement and repair. If it were strictly replacement, we would look to see if we had other funding sources or end of year funds to try to replace, but what's happening is we're tend, we're needing to replace more frequently because of the age of the instruments. And then we are not currently having enough funds in the budget to cover. So that's a three thousand dollar request. And then an additional eight thousand dollars to help cover the maintenance of the newly installed rain gardens as well as the playground. And I know if we do the renovation out back, if we're able to get enough funding for that, that'll have the port in place surface, but there will still be some void shifts around the building on this side. When the older gets laid and even in part of the preschool playground, right? Because we're talking about two phases of development for the so we have to replenish those so that we need Desi codes or PNC codes for so that safety surface falls on. So considering level services and the new requests, the budget that we're talking about today is a three point five nine percent increase total over FY twenty-five, roughly a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So let's talk a little bit about next steps and where our options are. Oh, I gave you historical data in this report also. I think it's good to look at here. The average budget increase over the last six budget cycles is two point six two percent. Part of our growth in FY twenty-five was related to the increase in the transportation contract. Otherwise, we would have been just under that four percent mark. But typically, Deerfield's budgets have been in a really healthy position. You all know that's because we've made some hard decisions over the last few years that have allowed us to stay more physically. All right, so here's the next step. So we're going to give you a little bit of food for thought and things to talk about. So on one hand, while we've included an increase of twenty thousand dollars for those expense adjustments that we talked about above, the copier, the transportation cola, all those pieces, and then the eleven thousand dollars for ground maintenance and instrument repairs, that thirty-one thousand dollars could potentially be discussed as being pulled from the budget. We don't want to falsify our budget. We want to have enough money to cover all of our expenditures. However, Deerfield has had savings in probably the last, if not four out of five, definitely three out of five because of leaves of absence that happened in this building. They tend to be maternity leaves, but they could be other leaves of absence or they could be vacancies in IA positions and then generate savings for us. So we have been able to cover these expenditures with existing budget money without growing the budget. There is no one right now that we know of going on leave of absence next year and the money savings would not be guaranteed because that's a change that, you know, could come up at any point for any of our employees. But if we did eliminate that additional three thirty-one thousand dollars, it would bring our budget down to just over three point. Darius and I have heard through several conversations that there may not be a lot of new revenue growth in the town. There are some other projects happening. Everyone has high needs. So, you know, I think anything that we can do to reduce would be greatly appreciated. So we wanted to throw that on the table. And the last thing that I have, while we circle back to questions and continue in the discussion, is just reminders about community meetings. I think the town meeting is April twenty-eighth. It's usually that last Monday. So based on the calendar, but I can find it on the website. But we are scheduled to have our public hearing on the fifth, March fifth, and then school committee vote. Should we see if we can talk about, where was she at? So this was to have the general fund, is it just because of that IA, there's other changes? No, that's not true. So the subcommittee, not the subcommittee, the committee for negotiations, after we put out a financial package, the numbers in that changed the placeholder a little bit based on the structure that we put in place for our position. So I did make an adjustment there. So that increased wages slightly based on what we put out.
Um, let me get that. I have a couple of look at, but what is the increase in, what was the increase in?
In the current year, it's only two and a half percent. Which was four thousand dollars. The first year had the major adjustment, the next four years of the contract only have a two and a half.
And we did reduce a bus run to make the budget from that. If like a bus that we have to even, so changed how the pretty almost early run. Bus stops at the bottom.
So the majority of the level service budget is wages. You know, I only made twenty thousand dollars in adjustments for non-wage accounts. So the hundred and eighty thousand, it's wage-based, which is typical. You know, that's, that's what happens every year. And then the ask, you know, eleven thousand dollars is minimal request. We're not asking for any new staffing. It's really just for covering expenses that we are, you know, that we're.
And then just for the conversation point of, I know Mary's heard this at Frontier, but you know, looking at rural aid, so you know, rural aid is, you know, the governor's budget is looked to be evenly funded. We still don't trust that as our, you know, it's not a, it's not a revenue source, but we're not, we don't trust it as being consistent every year. So but we do recognize that it is the state's attempt to offset the communities like ours that aren't giving it to them a check for seven years. So we're trying to apply fifty percent of it across in all the schools, in all the towns. It's kind of our first approach. So hopefully that number will continue to go up right now. I attended kind of a budget forecasting from the Tax Payers Association. Did something for the superintendents last week and they said if it goes up, it's not going to go up very much. So, you know, we can look at and while while the funding doesn't go up, they're giving it to more towns. And so it's actually, you know, it's actually adjusted and came down from the initial numbers that came out in and they actually came out really late this year. We were worried I was going to get a nine C cut. There's always rumors and we got scared. So we're kind of using it in portion and we're using it a year in the rear. So basically, we're using this year's funds that has to be expended by June thirtieth for next year. And we're just transferring it through school, through school choice, but the idea is that that we don't want to be dependent on funds that can be cut during the school year. If we can, because a lot of our, you know, have our colleagues in neighboring districts who are not fortunate enough to be able to do that. They're spending a year of and they're spending all of it to make budgets. So we have it. It's another healthy area that we have some flexibility in and much how we kind of managed the choice years ago. What we did here, you're spending right out of the year, we said, you know, we're not going to use that offset budget in the same year, the same kind of mentality that we're approaching here, but didn't get a year.
Obviously, I have a role in. So the IA for the DEN programs. Can you tell us a little bit about the program? I should, this year, there's a ton of information on that.
So it's doing well and
We still need the IA, we need the IA.
You know, I don't want to misquote, I mean, we did have an external, we were going to only internal students to start for the first year, then we had the opportunity to take in a tuition student. But I believe that tuition student has been done. So so it came in, it offset a lot from then. As we, we're trying to spend a district for that. And then it's students needs. You know, the details, students know it with us so that details are money stuff coming in.
And we have resident students in the program.
Right, and that's why we built the programs because we have the need internally so that we don't need our students needs.
And the IA who was in the program, if I'm remembering this correctly, I know that she was an existing IA. So we moved her in there to do one-to-one with this student. So we're sort of just moving her back to a different position. And there is almost always vacancies or absences of IAs in this building. So the reason I'm saying this is we didn't add an IA to service the students' needs. So it was on budget in FY twenty-five, we moved it to DEN to follow the student to pay for it from there. She's now moved back, so only part of her salary will hit this year's budget. So where I was talking about how we often have salary savings, this is what happens. You know, there's all these circumstances where you know, we budgeted thirty-something thousand, we're only going to spend seventeen of that. So it frees up some money. Cover some of those on. And I did verify with Tina just last week that she still needs the same number of staffing in the DEN program for next year. And then that thirty-one thousand you can cover that. Still includes the budget. It's not a guarantee. If we had every staff member, because salaries is really our only place to save money. We don't have flocking other lines. So if we had every staff member in the building every day next year, no one with unpaid time, if we had a substitute to fill every vacancy that that we have, we would not have enough money. But knowing what I know about Deerfield's budget and having watched the numbers and gone through this four or six budget cycles now, I feel comfortable that we could ride it out. At a minimum, we could take some of the savings that exist in the current year because we know we have vacancies and we know that we've had people on leaves and take that money from this year and call uses more than here, which we've also done in the past. Does anyone else feel about pulling off money that we we have true expenses, but we're saying we'll fund them with existing funds? Yeah, I agree. I think that's winning the list.
Yes, my only question is if there are any historicals, not that post-COVID is a good time to look at like the the workforce numbers in the staffing, but we have a percentage on or a dollar amount and like each year we've accrued this amount in savings for those salaries. So that we can just kind of benchmark where we are this year with a historical.
I would say we've had probably the equivalent of a full-time teacher out between various salary lines every year. Whether it's a teacher of two IAs or whatever it is, you know, a lot of times we have somebody that's supposed to start first day of school as an IA and they don't work out, they don't come in, so then we don't hire someone for three months. So we automatically have three months of IA savings in salary. So a lot of that happens here in Deerfield being the largest school with the highest number of. I feel pretty comfortable.
Maybe well, within our, you know, within our process, right? So basically, we're now, you know, because we've been through it, we're announcing our budget. We're going to have a public hearing to hear questions on it and then we can make adjustments still at that point. Okay, and if you can't go up after the public hearing, you can come down. Or you can have another public hearing. You can, but it's just a process. So I'm just going to say that aloud in the sense of, you know, the brains communities here for the first time, they're going to digest it, so they may have some questions. And if you do have like specific like numbers and that kind of stuff, please send us an email so that Shelly can bring it and, you know. But you know, and also like, you know, no line items or, you know, anything that comes up. You know, please, if you listen ahead time, it's easier, but we will be, we will be prepared to have the budget hearing. So we have a budget hearing, we talk about it. And then we, we don't vote the budget that night. We used to. Then we get some feedback that it was kind of a little bit too quick to propose. So now then we'll have another meeting after that to then finally look at. There's still a lot more talk that can happen if things change. You know, if you pull up the questions, if you need to, that kind of thing. Folks can't believe we want, you know, have ideas. This is kind of like the first time that we're just going to announce. This is more like looking the land and have your sense.
As far as the new requests, they're so minimal. I'd really like to be able to Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll have to pay for at a minimum, the rain garden maintenance. We, we don't want our beautiful front, the building to be overgrown and not taken care of and our custodial staff can't handle the, the maintenance on that. So we'll have to out, but you know what? We'll just, we'll find ways to cover it because that eleven thousand is part of the thirty-one. As we continue to near year end, I will keep you updated on available budget funds. And I do think we could find a way to pull up a proportion of that thirty-one thousand, if not all of it, off of current year salary savings. off of current year salary savings. Um, you know, we sort of grow something that we pay on school choice onto general fund to save, save the school choice money. And then we spend the school choice money savings next year, if you say. Um, yeah, so I guess, obviously if you have more questions, let's continue the conversation. Um, but we would look, be looking sort of for a, not a formal vote, right? I haven't been doing that at all, the committees have you?
Uh, yeah, we, it's a vote to move the budget forward, I guess.
As presented.
As presented, so to bring it to here. So that may, it's the cleanest way, it's in a smaller game, there's three people, they're the most, not a yes, and no good enough. So you have voting the budget, you're voting to move this number forward.
Support to move forward, let's just call it a three percent increase support. Not shutting down. Yeah, sorry, I was just going to look for. Any further conversation or discussion, we're in front? All there? Or no? So I will continue preparations. The public hearing conversation will be much larger. We'll get into how the budgets develop, the processes that we've gone through. You all will get a line-by-line item budget for that, you'll get it in advance. So if you have questions and want to send them my way ahead of time, you can always ask it here, but. We have new business. School choice. Tiffany, what?
Definitely going to have to take the lead on this. And there's a good conversation. So this is looking at our, so we have two things we have to look at tonight. One, you have to make a vote that, continue, I need a formal vote, where the Department of Education makes your formally vote, that you'll be a school choice the week here. If you continue to participate in it, so that's one thing. And then, um, Tina provided a outline of where applications are right now. Um, as you can see, in the second, the first row column, pending applications. And then she has, you know, we basically in the past have given her discretion based on the numbers that we see to, um, make decisions about numbers of school choice coming in. You know, the interesting thing, so you can kind of see through the, the number of residents that we have in each class, the number of school choice, um, um, for next year, that we already have in, in sections. And then you can see the number of sections, and here's the concern. So currently the kindergarten is projected to be at eighteen residents. We have twenty-two applications for school choice. Um, and the concern is when, if we go with a single section, and I notice the route we've gone, um, you know, for those who are newer to the committee, there used to be three sections per grade. And we did, over time, reduce it to two sections per grade and stop taking larger numbers of choice, where the majority of the classroom may have been choice in a few, in a few grade levels throughout. And so we reduce that down. The concern is that you have a single section of, um, single section grade level. Um, and it's a big decision, so we can, this is something that we can kind of talk about probably, um, into the next meeting as well. But the idea that if you go to a single section, I think it does disrupt the school. Because now you have a single section teach, going through every single year, you're going to have to change teachers in grade levels. Because as that single team goes through, all the double teachers for each grade level, only one's going to be teaching that and the other one's going to have to switch grade levels. So it causes a disruption going through. And we, we dealt with that when we went from three to two. Um, you, you lose the ability to divide students up. Um, and you also are, um, you know, it's still a healthy number of class, you know, the size of growth, you know, so they're six, you know, six, eight, we go, uh, students there, we go. Tina wanted to bring this people's attention because it is, um, it does become, um, a different kind of issue. Um, she said that. So she said basically she did, she put options on here and she was going to walk through them, but one class is, is to go to one classroom, reduce the staff, no, no school choice admissions of the twenty-two applications that we have. Um, this will result in one kindergarten classroom with eighteen students, would create a bubble here, meaning that's, that I was just explaining, um, would accommodate one section of future grades. Um, and it would also mean our current pre-K students, toy students who are with us would not go to each kindergarten. For those who are in our preschool right now will not come up, because we don't put them up. Um, option two is to go to two classrooms, accept school choice with current eighteen residents and four preschool stu, choice students. We can create two classrooms of eleven each, and then, um, balance these class sizes. And then we can open up fourteen school choice slots, resulting in two sections of approximately eighteen each. So it's a interesting problem, right?
I think for, for our own residents, seems like we do get fucked when you, you know, we have a kindergarten. You know, I guess September, September, first, we're going to be doing.
I've definitely done it in other schools. Um, we just had to do that this year in Sunnily, because they went from nineteen to twenty-six in a single, in a single ball. Um, if they had even more, um, it, that happens a lot there where they get quite some downs. Um.
Even with residents. Even with residents at eighteen, that's a little bigger than we like to see.
In a single.
And if, you know, even two or three more. I mean, I don't know, whatever.
Right.
It's just difficult to add a section of this.
Yes, we can agree with twenty-five, we can go up to twenty-five, they're our large class.
Yeah.
Right, we don't, people want to know that, where's your max, that's the state max. And then usually grade twenty-five, you have probably two I As and probably a third, and slightly sometimes usually based on need. Um, even then, there's just been a lot more in, um, in the younger grades coming out of COVID, we're just seeing that, um, we're not promoting larger class sizes, so, um, you know, and I think there's also a, a benefit to, um, there's a, there's a benefit to a certain side, certain maps, right? Of students as well. We have two groups, it allows you to change groupings, it allows people to, when you have issues between students and so forth over the duration of their time here, separating students, that kind of thing is, um, is, is a great thing to be able to do. So there are, there's a lot of benefits there. Obviously, um, the downside is that we were trying to get away from having majority of school choice in a classroom. I will say that those applications, the other elementary schools in our district, we are seeing double digits in kindergarten in all of our buildings. In the majority of, of their districts, you're not taking, but you very few, they're very, they're all pretty much at their max. Um, and so that's the other, and they're just, they're same school, so they're seeing greater, so they're not looking, because they may have the opposite, right? Um, the classroom may have to, or the opposite, they extend, so.
I think, you know, out in the community, school choices and subjects, sometimes it's hard to understand, and some people don't understand that. Why this doesn't cost us, why would you do a school choice at all? I don't know, but I think, I don't know, you have two sections and taking in some school choice. I think making that part of our budget presentation, what school choice is, how we benefit from it over time. I think it's something we can talk about. And one last question, in the, the proposed budget for next year includes two kindergarten teachers. It's, it's already in there at this moment. And if she can fill fourteen school choice slots that we didn't have the budget money for, we did, the credit for, school choice was paid for. Even if it was just a five thousand dollars, you know.
It will be, with fourteen students, you will be spending, statistically alone, you're going to, some of those are going to be, um, in between those and all this space. Um, yeah, and I think you're right, when you look at, at school choice, what, people don't realize the amount of things that, um, amount of capital, we try to not to offset budget with it, because it gets into that dangerous thing, but we do.
We do.
We do, we're sorry, we do offset budget, but, um, where we dip in further is, you know, especially obviously Frontier is the same way. I mean, there's, we took, I mean, we got our capital debt, and there is no debt anymore. We give up, no D S R money and school choice. Um, it also creates a mass of students that allows you to have extra program. So you allow, you know, you can more, different types of specials here, um, you know, more than once a week as well, when you have capacity like that, so we'll schedule those kind of things. So, you know, and then obviously at Frontier, there's a, that's a lot that many of these, um, school choices kind of trickle through. Um, you know, if Frontier didn't have a state choice students, you wouldn't have, and we're near the electives, and then you'd have the opposite effect where students would leave to go find those electives, go find the music program that, you know, has capacity, drama program has capacity, our arts, our A P courses, and then our specialized programs. And a lot of, we have, you know, three separate special education programs of a Frontier, um, from here, where, you know, those can be tuitioned in, and we keep our students here, I mean, I'm just saying that. So it is, you know, I think, um, are we still, I don't have the information from there, I wish you knew what the sensitive data was for preschool. You know what I mean? And, um, you know, are, is this a dip year, you know, this kind of thing? Exam.
So we have, uh, just so you have the whole picture and all the information, nine outgoing, six. So if we do not replace those normal students, we will automatically be down almost five thousand. Basically, with their project, so. You know, we talked about this, that as our class sizes shrink, and we have limited ability to take choice, it's going to eventually have a budget in. And you talked about this a little bit, and we've talked about it in the past with the decisions to reduce sections. It dynamically is going to change the school and what it looks like, it feels like, the smaller we get. And that class will, you know, you'll carry that through until sixth grade. It's going to keep shrinking. And going back, the two classes will be more challenging for you as budget, even in the year for. I know we've talked, we've gotten adding a section, or a previous section, just in school choice, but I would be very. Or for other reasons, then, a team that works, that's the matter that was.
And we have, um, normally school choice, it just feels shaky a little bit, it's not usually February, we purposely are moving it up. Um, we found that as people wait, sometimes they make decisions based on who they, who accepts them first. And so we're trying to get earlier in the process of families now, and all four towns, all four principals are doing it. So that we don't, um, one school doesn't steal from the other just by being first in making the decision. So we're all, all the school trees are this month, because the choice rules, and they have a release date where they're going to, um, let families know. Um, then obviously, just as a reminder to how school choice works, if we didn't have enough space and were more applicants, we have to do a lot of assist them, you know, we don't get to select. Let's see. Right now, she said she will. She said fourteen, she can take fourteen, if we do, we do fourteen school slots, there's fourteen. Oh, yeah, you're right, she would have to do a lottery, thank you. I was in here for our next.
Do we have, um, uh, data that shows for students that we admit, crystal choice at a young age, how many of them tend to stay? But the. That just stands, but we go back into a lottery, we want to.
Yeah, we really had to do a lottery one.
Even just through the E S, it might be a nice data to show that when you do let them, they tend to stay, because they're refused by the community.
They do.
Talking point for the, these aren't kids that come from here.
Right. Um, the majority where school choice students at Frontier comes to the other names. We only take a handful of students who are, who are choosing Frontier. Starting in school, usually. Um, proportionately, we probably get the most from Greenfield. Um, and then it goes up and down from, it's north coming, coming south, so, um, it's Gilmore, New Greenfield, um, Mohawk. You know, and as it, it's a, you know, choice is a tough game, because it's, again, I said, you know, they make that, that saying, you know, don't, um, don't hate the player, hit, hit the game, um, and he said, um, because we're in it, but we've been the beneficiary of it. And to, um, as other schools are getting smaller and smaller, students are finishing, making choices to seek out programming. Um, you know, and similar and same time what's happening at Frontier is we're having less students need. And so that's where we also, that also helped how we paid down, um, the debt that one year was not just the fact that we had student choice in, the amount they were going out, the amount they were going to charter schools went way down. Hundreds of thousands way down, because a charter school is twenty thousand dollars for each student. Um, and so the charm of charter schools seems to be going down, at least in our community. Um, we're not seeing the numbers, just to be clear, head down, make sure I'm saying it correctly.
At Frontier?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
So, I have to confirm, I have to say there. Um, so, but yeah, so, you know, the amount of, you know, um, in, in students going to Amherst or the North HN, which are the bigger schools, if people are looking for more programming, is also going. Um, so, exactly, like you see, and something to say. Then we went down, my kid graduated. What's that?
My kid graduated, it's, we're out of school choice again.
Okay. So, and it was, and it goes to, you know, there was some spikes in, um, school choice out when we had some bad budget years, not in Deerfield, when some of them had lost all their extras and whatever, you know, this was again, I was principal, assistant principal at the time, so over ten years ago, but they had a major and they lost, I think, eight, eight to ten students choice out because they had to make so many financial cuts, and then, then they lost, then you're paying, also your financial cuts got doubled. Um, makes sense, you know, obviously you dug out that, you're missing out. Anyway, so that's what happens with the schools up north, and, um, it's in a way so people know that the tech school continues to grow. And so they've increased by over a hundred students in, in four years. And while the, um, the valley's getting smaller, they're getting bigger and they're taking more students. And, yeah, you go with it, you know, where they did the pioneer two years ago, um, they took forty-two students out of an eighty-seven person class. And so obviously, their, their ninth grade class went from, you know, close, close to a hundred to in the forties, and then it caused a mass exit, because it was not enough anything. And so that class has actually gotten down, I think, to in the teens now. And so we actually picked up a few kids from that, because they're, you know, offer some of the things. And so they're, I mean, they're fighting to build that back up, but, I mean, it's going to be something.
Yeah, I mean, the conversation around funding or filling the class for school choice kids is important. But if you look at the rest of the class sections there, if we did not have school choice, our resident numbers are high enough that you would still need two sections in every grade level, and school choice. Our resident numbers are high enough that you would still need two sections in every grade level and school choice right now funds nine I A's. If we didn't have that revenue coming in. You'd either be letting go of nine I A's or some other type of service in the building, whether it's, you know, arts related service providers, we'd have to come up with that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars elsewhere.
We asked.
Well.
Oh, I mean, it's just. With the percentage of students you still have, I you wouldn't be cutting down the I A's.
Yeah, well, if the town could afford it, I guess, and then you would be. Yeah.
I would just be.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be so easy just to.
No, it wouldn't. Of course it wouldn't be easy. So you're we're not going to make a decision on that tonight, but it seems like.
Um, I so thinking about it, um. It would be good for you to make a decision on it. If you think you need more time. I believe our. Decision making for school choice. Is March fifteenth. Um, so we could take this to the next week. We are meeting early. We're the first. We're meeting the first week in March. So it's in two weeks. Be a quick turnaround, right? Perfect.
Does anyone feel like more conversation or more than one? One more.
Seems to me like if if these if we're looking at this same type of statistic this time next year, then then a more serious. Uh, deep dive into the identity and makeup of our population needs to be had, but. So the ripple effects of this over the course of the the term of this class through sixth grade, I I think that that does more damage than than if this were to be just the one exception here. So. I would I would um move that we we um. I I make a motion that we um. Select option two where we accept the um the students for um school choice and have two classes in kindergarten. It looks like we would have a lot of it.
I just tested Tina. Text me later, say so. But I'm asking her if um she knows the census.
Yeah, I'm very curious if this loan here is that a result of families not moving in? Is it a result of these are kids who are born during COVID year?
It's odd because all the other towns had a ton of residents. So I don't know what happened in Deerfield. But. I was just going to say that we did a financial indicator to. And demographics was one of the most concerning um factors. I don't remember the specifics, but basically the population is remaining essentially unchanged in numbers. The age distribution is just getting. I mean, um, I believe that report is available online and that's. There was a lot of talk about that every year in housing, right? And since if people are gaining their homes and homes aren't turning over and. Um, because they know where to go and the housing prices and all that kind of thing, they go, we have spitting and such.
So um, we made a motion to approve. Do we need to vote on option one or just voting through school choice as recommended?
You would say.
I think it's with the two sections.
With you would say you would be voting. First, you're going to vote to be a school choice school and then you would say we are going to vote, we are um looking at option number two. To instruct the the principal to make two sections and fill this. You know, I would say at her discretion, I would you can make she can. If more people come, not just that grade level, but other grade levels as they come, if we get more applications, you know, to come back here, it's a discussion, you know, based on the numbers here. We do it. We do that every vote.
We do that as one vote. Motion for school choice. Action. Yes, sir. Well, we want to modify your motion.
I I will attempt to uh make a motion to um to approve uh deep enrollment elementary school as a school choice school for the two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six year. And and um um I move that we uh provide a lot, provide um the principal with the um. Hope we had the right word there for a minute there. I lost.
For school choice.
The oversight, yeah, discretion, oversight and discretion um related to school choice decision.
Okay, I'll pick it. Very second. So I found an email from Kim McCarthy, the early childhood director. It's from December, so not updated and her. This is not frequent. Never mind.
So. Tina just wrote, March first is her rolling acceptance. So right here, let's just go to that. So also, um, we don't have the census. We usually get it typically in requesting January and she hasn't gotten it yet. Also typically have three or four additional summer that come in the summer. I have two tours scheduled after vacations of families saying they're moving to Deerfield. They both have kindergarten students for next year.
This this is the thing that that drives me a lot too, because is uh being in a real estate family, we're always showing my my wife's always showing homes to young people, just trying to get in. You know, so I not drop a bat nap we could have and we have new students right now.
They get some skills. I'll see a motion in a second. There's no further conversation. All in favor? Uh, next up is the approval of the new contract for the director of the administration. I am very happy to say that we are able to. Shelley, I'll give you a very good one here. Um, and we've sent the contract for three years. Thank you, Shelley. We appreciate you. Uh, we do have to uh vote to approve the new contract. No, I don't know. Wait a minute, second. For the conversation? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, our next item is a discussion on immigration enforcement in schools.
So I sent out um. I sent out the procedures that I put in place, met with um school administrators and may have since done, trained their front office staff about what to do if. Immigration enforcement was, law enforcement was to come to the school and try to have access to students. And basically, the the big fear that's been out there um is that um ICE agencies, ICE agents would be coming to the school and fulfilling their agency. Um, warrants. And so their own agencies have their they have warrants within their own agency and that's, you know, and so they know who they're working to pick up and um basically um. Who they're chasing down um through, you know, immigration status and what. Schools are, you know, as I explained it, I mean, did a couple of trainings on this, but um to learn more about this, you know, all the details before it. Um, but schools, you know, while it's a public school, we aren't open to the public. So um. Uh, immigration enforcement agencies cannot just come into the school with their own warrants to access students or student records. They're protected under FERPA. And um they would need a judicial warrant. And the concern out there, let's say, out of state is that schools would not know the difference between the two. And um would be handing over students without, you know, not without. Giving up kind of the legal protections as our as our being parents here, um being well, Francis, um of those students. So. Basically, the procedure I put in place has if there's any law enforcement step coming to a school um seeking either information or um. Person that they would have to run through the superintendent's office. Um, and we have a quick line to our attorney as well. So we, you know, find, you know, get a copy of whatever warrant they have, make sure it's appropriate. And if it isn't appropriate, send them on their way if they can't clear their business here. And I've said this in the other school communities, you know. I I think it's kind of shameful that the federal government um where in in one side is, you know, schools used to be a sanctuary place where um immigration enforcement was not taken, was not done. They just kind of stayed out of schools because. According to the Supreme Court in nineteen two, um, we want to educate all individuals in our community regardless of immigration status. And that just makes complete sense because nobody wins by keeping kids out of state. No matter where their lives take them, we we help the world um by educating everybody um that we can. So the fact that we. By law have to take them in and then we are going to then use the place that we bring them into as a place to um round up. Um, is just a firmly disagree with that and it's definitely shameful. Um, so that being said, um. You know, our our role as schools is to make sure when parents send their children here that they're safe and that um. You know, their legal rights are going to be protected while they're here as well. So that's what this. Process goes through um and whether or not people agree or disagree with what's going on in the immigration thing, I think that's that's where the school, I think, is standing its line. The other two documents that you have um that were sent out were. Sample documents coming from um national organizations about policies. One's a policy, one's a resolution. The policy um is going to go to a policy subcommittee. Frontier had a discussion on it earlier this week. And so did your other elementary schools. And the idea there is that you have a policy that basically is taking my procedures, letting me procedures from that policy and, you know, other information I got from state organizations. Is if I was to suddenly leave and you have a new administrator, they can change procedures, right? And so if you have a policy, at least you're holding up, you're holding the foundation of what you believe. Could happen in in the instance where. Immigration enforcement. Um, the resolution is more about making a statement to the community um in a different way. And if you go into that, it's going to have to be rewritten. There's a lot of things that's not applied directly to our school. There's a lot of language that's um. Probably doesn't fit our community correctly. Um, so I'm recommending that, you know, moving forward with the policy, it basically passing legis, basically your it's your legislation. To um, you know, move things forward. You can always change it if things have to change later on. And it does send a message to the community that. You're backing that managers here moving forward as a team. So um. That is not being done tonight. That is just kind of informal. If you want to put it on the agenda and then you frontier was going to do it. And so I said, you know what? I want you to ask me two months behind thinking of the policy. So I'm giving them. So. Yeah, that's the that's the other two things that to be discussed. So the um my procedures was just an F Y I and then the other thing is if you want to do something.
I just want to say thank you for coming up. Moving forward on this so quickly and getting the teachers on place and. Taking a stand on how the schools stand. I attended the seminar that I may have seen Gloria, hopefully members, but it's been one. I found it on panel. It was very helpful and informative. Lot of information of how the students are affected. We've done a lot of that as well. So uh, the policy is going to the subcommittee. All sorry, on its way.
On its way. The policy, the subcommittee hasn't set up a meeting yet, but if you're on policy, there's some. So um haven't set it up yet, but basically. They made a decision. But yeah, according to that, we need to read the books. And so that was coming either way at this point. Um, and then if you want to do a resolution, I think you're just discussing. Or if you want to do that, then.
There's a good, an important stance to the schools taking out in terms of this 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 very important boundary between the inside of the school and the outside of the school. And that's an important boundary. Again, regardless of where you stand politically, in the big picture, we just don't allow anybody to walk into the school and and take a child. Unless they go through the approved process. So um. It's very important, I think, that 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 front staff training, that procedural training be implemented and then reinforced as much as possible. Uh, because this would happen very fast, right? Do I do I feel like this is is um right around the corner? I don't know, but if if it does happen, it'll happen very fast. So I worry that um. Front facing staff uh could would be caught off by the intensity of such a moment. So the training is imperative.
And then there's also the separations, you don't have person, their policies, the back team. So the possibly can't share information. So under FERPA, we can't share the information without without a judicial warrant. And um we don't collect information of someone's residency status in the United States. So um or immigration stats. This is so that's not written down. So if somebody even asks us for a file, we don't give them that. We may know through conversation with a parent what they're, you know, if they share, they would expect for the most part, we don't know. You know, those kind of things. Um, so um. Again, on top of that, the um the concern was they would be coming with warrants to gang, try to gain that information. Um, to look through students files and that was all protected perfectly. They would have to have an additional one. And you're right, will things change? I don't in I think realistically, it's not going to start in Western Massachusetts if, you know, in our community. Um, you you would see something happening elsewhere. There has been no ICE raids on schools. Um, it was talked about having different states. You you really have to read into the article. There's a lot of gang stuff going on and that, you know, so really reading into why they were there in the first place. But it's not going to seek and find students. But the concern is yet, right? We've seen some, you know, I never thought they would take away the sanctuary status. So, you know, um, it is to it's good to be prepared and. If on Monday things change, we, you know, my organization will let us let me know. I will let you know if we have to make changes, we'll make changes because it's our jobs to keep you safe.
You know, who under residents information that the schools require birth certificates?
Good question. I don't think they do.
So uh, I think we need to have a conversation of do we want to discuss having a resolution? Or are we just running the policy if the policy is approved by the subcommittee? But that's. And this would be, this is a proposed resolution. Think of this as our first meeting.
I think the proposed resolution is literally to cut a sample. So, you know, if uh. If you were to adopt something like that, um. You know, you probably want someone to go through. I don't remember. He was stupid, but um. Very literally.
We'll need to.
So some people will, great, some people uh, you know, there was some questions about. They came up with Deerfield, don't worry, it was reputable now, um, but they came up with Deerfield, whether or not the agents themselves will be allowed to enter the building to have a conversation with administration or the administration, whether a conversation has to happen on the site. So there was conversations about that. They wanted to send that into the policy. So. We can't remember what twenty minutes ago they on that. Um. So um they're gonna, you know, they're gonna put together a policy. You'll get a copy of the policy before the next meeting. Um, you can weigh in your um two re- two readings to make it go place faster because you've already kind of seen the example of it and such. Um, you know, so that'll be what I'll recommend people do. That's kind of what's going for it. So I would recommend let's let's work with the policy unless someone really wants to go and take the draft of a resolution and bring it back. And you as a committee. And you as a committee do something different. Um, I think you're the only committee that's looking to see. What, what hasn't, yeah, everybody, you're the last meeting, you're the last meeting in the morning, so, um. You know, we also doing the resolution, we're just doing the policy.
Well, I think there is value in a resolution. Publicly and firmly stating where we stand on these things. The policy. Is. Doing what we, you know, it's accomplishing what we. What the resolution would be. Policies. So. So we can set the resolutions.
Yeah, so the policy is put on the agenda and. People change their minds. In fact, you, you can throw it on the agenda.
You just have a curiosity area. So the. And I might have read through it in, in breadth, but so they. In in an example where there is um ICE interaction with school personnel here at Deerfield Elementary School. Uh, they follow protocol and direct them to your office. What is the protocol at that point? What, where, do you, will we meet, we meet? Or legal counsel?
Right. And so basically, you know, it would be, so, you know, we deal with. More sort of frontier than here. We deal with law enforcement and investigation agencies. I won't say all the time, but it's not like, oh my God. Officer of some agencies here, what do we do? So it's, it's not completely, you know, what do you, what's, why, what do you need? What are you here for? You know what I mean? And that's kind of what you're talking about in a sense of like, these are, in in my perspective, these are officers that work for the United States government. And I'm going to treat them with respect. They're going to come in and we're going to talk about what's your business here? And I'm going to see if they have the proper documentation and conduct. You know, um, and meanwhile, if they also have, as part of it, we would be calling the parents of the children. Um, to let them know that there's, um, if they were looking for certain individuals rather than just general information. Um, you'd be saying that there's somebody on the law enforcement here that can talk to your child. Or, you know, talk to, or, you know, that kind, whatever the warrant says. If their warrant is, you know, will be run by the attorney, I, I looked at them. It's not rocket science to figure out the two, but if someone, as you were kind of saying, arrests. And can be very intimidated by the moment, um. You know, you could look at this other warrant and say, hey, you know, it's really official. And that is an official thing, but. Um, a bench warrant, we've seen, we've seen warrants, we've seen, we've seen that and stuff, so we know what it's supposed to look like. So, um, I would go through. If they have the proper documentation, then we would talk about how to appropriately um follow. That's how we, you know, we do that kind of thing. In the past, we had to that, in, in, at Frontier, in the sense that an arrest had been made. Once it's never happened, it was happening before. And so you work with the agency about how do we do this appropriately? They don't have that recommendation and sorry, you can't. And they know that too, right? And at that point, um. You know. Go on their way and you'd still be notifying parents that they were here in in such and that, so. That's kind of how we. Anything, you know, I mean, we will all the what ifs, but. If I had to come over here, and I have backup people, Joe's a backup and also Karen Ferney, I'm the director of student services, a backup. You know, both. You know, the subject.
All right. Anything else for more? Reports? I do not remember four. I'll do the fourth. Um, there is, I think, I think, um, there was very little new of notes that was going to be. Um. As you before, that during the discussion, I think I.
No, there's.
All right. Okay, I like it. So you want to come up to me there? All right, all in favor? Oh, great. Thank you very much.